I haven't heard otherwise, but not here yet.
We'll give them a few minutes. There's a train block before Street and Main Street.
How's it going?
I'm doing the paper.
I actually might have time to go by the office.
That's where Dave is, I'm pretty sure.
Oh.
He's blocked.
It looks like it was literally fourth and Ninth Street.
Yeah.
It's been awhile.
Which ones?
I'm not happy.
Would you call the row please?
Robert Kraus.
President.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held March 16th, 2015. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held February 10th, 2015. Item C approve budget supplements to the general fund, eight thou-- excuse me, $800,000 debt service fund, $250 a quarter cents park improvement fund, $400,000 Parks Geo Bond Fund, $77,000, and CDBG Disaster Recovery Fund of $1 million. Item D is approve and modify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015. And on this, there's also supposed to be a proclamation that got left off, and I'm gonna read this in just a minute. But at this time, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, make one to approve.
Alright, thank you both. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, I'd like to make a proclamation. Apologies for being left off the agenda, but this is a pretty important one for me. This is to our Communications Department. Whereas in 1991 congressional resolution named the second full week in April of every year National Telecommunicator Week, and whereas emergencies can occur at any time or any place and require the assistance of police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas 911 is the hotline for help for people in emergency situations, and the 911 call takers voice is the first assurance that help is on the way, and whereas 911 professionals regularly meet the challenges of extremely stressful situations with calmness and efficiency, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of all of these emergency responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who the 911 Communicator Center, and whereas the public safety dispatchers are the 911 dispatchers, everyday superheroes providing assistance before any other emergency services arrive on the scene, and whereas public safety dispatchers are a vital link for our emergency responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and assuring their safety, and whereas the public safety dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatments of injuries and illnesses on a daily basis, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of his or her daily job duties. Now therefore, I Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through the 18th, 2015, is the National Telecommunicator Week in honor of all the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our region's citizens and emergency responders safe.
And if Tammy Cohen would come up... Here you go. I'd like to present this to you. On behalf of the City Council, thank you very much for all the work you do.
Thank you.
And if you could have seen those guys that night of the tornado, Gallin's Group, both chiefs, I want to say thank you very much. Your guys worked flawless across the whole system, and it was a pleasure to see it. Just, it was truly amazing. If anybody hadn't seen that, you'd have never believed it. So, good job. Item number three is discuss and consider approval of agreement with Murrah Phillips, PC, for legal representation for officers Joseph Bradley and Ryan Meyer in the Rodriguez versus Warren Theater cases.
Mayor, this is the agreement for legal services for the attorney that will represent these two officers that you all had previously approved. This is just the contract for their services.
Okay.
Mr. Brink.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for votes, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item four and item five, we've been asked to... Item four, five, and eight, we've been asked to table these to... for two weeks.
I'm making a motion to table items four, five, and eight for two weeks.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a table and motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, items are tabled. Item number six is consider approval of a contract with Aguirre and Fields for Engineering Services for the widening and resurfacing of West I-35 Service Road from Southwest 19th to Southwest 34th in the amount of $61,199.82.
Mayor and Council, this is for the necessary engineering on the West Service Road, south of 19th widening project. That project will start right there about where the southbound on-ramp is, where the concrete section stops and the asphalt starts, and extends south to 34th Street. The widening will stop right on the north side of that bridge box, south of the last shopping center there, and we'll also add curbing on both sides. And it also includes the surveying, which the agenda item does not include that. And Aguirre and Fields is a new engineering firm that have recently located their offices in Moore. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
This is one of the projects that was included in the financing that was done, I believe, in 2014, last year, for several projects around in the 19th Street vicinity, most of them, but...
So, it's a budgeted item?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
That's correct, and it'll terminate right north of the bridge box, which is at the south end of the retail. We'll go ahead and mill an overlay down to 34th.
Kenny, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
I'm staying. Item number seven is approve the final plat of Silverleaf Shopping Center in General Moore, located in the northwest quarter of Section 13, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Northeast 12th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. Application by Eastern Crossing LLC suddenly, uh, Planning Recor-- excuse me, Planning Commission recommended approval of this, 8-0. Listen more than one.
Mayor and Council, this property is located south of Northeast 12th Street and east of Eastern Avenue. It is currently zoned C3, medium commercial district. The final plat consists of two lots on approximately nine acres. Uh, the plat takes in the existing Silverleaf Shopping Center complex itself, because it was never platted in the past. Uh, and then there will be another lot, Lot Number Two, for new development that will front along Eastern Avenue. Uh, access is provided from Northeast 12th Street and Northeastern Avenue. There is no flood plain located on this property. Water is available to serve the site. Uh, sewer to Lot Two must be extended from Northeast 12th Street. An easement must be provided on the plat for the sewer extension. Uh, Steph recommends approval of the final plat. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
You know what's going here? Is this the new Brahms that they're putting over there?
It is not the new Brahms, no. Um, it'll be a lease center, uh, inline shopping center with three to four lease spaces.
Is the applicant here?
I lease it.
Just have a few questions.
Ross Morris, Morris Engineering, representing the applicant.
Okay. I just have some questions here, though, if you could just have a look through them. And it's my understanding you take them backwards to come through them. Does the applicant own the rest of that shopping center, the Silverleaf Shopping Center?
Yes.
And I live over there, and so I see that often, and it's just been my observations over the years that the repair, the state of repair of that shopping center has kind of gone down. You just look at the parking lot, the condition of the parking lot. One of the signs that faces along Eastern, or excuse me, 12th Street, is, because cars ran into it, and it's been that way for a number of years. And then there's some graffiti as well as some of the other stuff, that people have cut holes in it or ran into it with vehicles. So I would just want to bring up some of those issues, and that I believe that property owners have the possibility to maintain their property, uh, in a satisfactory condition. And, you know, if we approve this new property, I don't want it to... That whole area that continues to go down because property owners aren't making the necessary repairs to maintain their property.
Okay.
Do you have any comment, or if you're on behalf of the business or landowner, property owner, can you speak on his behalf? Has he been addressed some of those things?
Um, I haven't spoken with him about any of the items. I'm making sure how, where he is or where he's at on his... making the repairs.
Right.
Uh, I know he's got, like I said, we were... the whole point was we were gonna put a... He's gonna put like a little strip out parcel out there. Uh, and that's what prompted us coming in to get the plat, because it never actually been platted.
Right.
So, I don't... I would just have to... I don't know where we stand, where he stands with... I don't understand, maybe there was something with code violations there, if anybody knows?
Well, I'm all about if you've got any violations there, that...
No, um, our code enforcement deals with just nuisance abatements, and to my knowledge, there's nothing out there that would be considered a nuisance necessarily, which is different than just the general upkeep of the property. Um, I would agree with you that there needs to be some improvement there, but unfortunately, our codes... Our codes really can't...
Right.
So we just rely on the property owners to manage, maintain their properties?
Correct. And the... actually, the owner was here, like, when are we, two minutes ago? I'm not sure where he went, but, um, he's not here now, so...
I don't think that was him.
Is he local? The owner... is ownership local?
Yeah, he owns, well, he owns the furniture store that's there, the whole shopping center, he owns that. But his address is local, I mean, usually if I hear from him or contact him, he's at the furniture store, so...
I mean, Ross, this isn't your problem, but I guess there is some frustration in the fact that why should we build another one when the other one's not being taken care of?
Well, if you'd like, I can have him... I can give him your number and have him contact you, if that's what...
I think goes with him. Either myself or the city manager, or we could relay his conversation to...
They're good councilmen for that ward, right?
I'm not.
Oh, you're not?
He's not, but if he would like to talk to one, he can call me, because I'm just as unhappy as Councilman Ham is, because it's... I know it's not your responsibility.
I've been having call, one of you.
That's fine, because like...
It might be more beneficial, Ross, if you could ask him to come to the next city council meeting and let him hear from the council members about the concern. I think it's a legitimate concern, and that he needs to be aware of it more directly than just individual visits.
Yeah, and again, we know it's not your responsibility, but it's bad. He needs to know it. It's... surely he does. But it's one of the worst properties around, in my opinion.
And I haven't conversed with him about whether or not, okay, he's got the money to build this building. He's also gonna do some renovations. I don't know if he... he hasn't said anything to me about it. But, uh, he's got the money to do the building, that's what this is all about, so... Uh, I don't know if there's some renovations involved in that. I mean, it's a nice center, it just needs to fix potholes and take care of some things, and it would be very nice.
Why don't we do this? How about we make this contingent on the fact that he does it, or doesn't get an occupancy permit?
I don't know if you can do that.
Yeah, I'm not sure we can do that.
We can just table it for two weeks and ask him to come back, and doesn't the treaty suggest that we just talk to us about some of that?
Is that appropriate, the treaty?
Yeah, I don't think we can...
Make it contingent.
Make a contingent upon it, but I think that you can impress upon him that...
It's a darn good idea.
I mean, the property still needs to be platted. It was not platted back in the day when it was done. That was why we brought this anyway, otherwise it would have just been... we should... we'd have just gone in with the building permit. But it still needed to... needs to be platted, so, you know, and that's to not hold up the plating. That's still gotta be done. Uh, whether all of a sudden it goes away or not, it would be beneficial to have the property platted.
Honestly, as a business owner, if he's gonna lease that, he's gotta clean it up anyway.
Yeah, I mean...
That's just natural.
You wouldn't lease from him and put a little jewelry in there.
Nobody would.
And there's at least four empty spots in there, it looks like, right now.
Yeah, there were some, uh, and I guess some of them have been filled and gone, and filled and gone, and... I guess Blockbuster's gone too.
Yeah. I, you know, I see the property and what it looks like, but I know if a guy's gonna spend that much money, he's probably talking a couple million bucks to do that, he's probably gonna fix up the graffiti and stuff off of it anyway, I feel.
Right. And I apologize, I didn't ask him that, he didn't offer it, and so, I don't really know... I can't say he is gonna fix it or he isn't gonna fix it, it's just...
Well, that's not your job, so...
But nonetheless, like I said, the property still needs to be platted so that it...
Right.
It's actually done and fits with everything, so...
Well, I think we should platter for him.
If we platter, will it come back?
That's...
Come back to the board of council?
Well, makes him come back?
Then he won't have to come back, because if we platted, he can afford it.
I appreciate all the... who will, and I understand... I hope that he would do it.
Right.
But I'm sure like the business...
Mr. Brink, is there any problem with this? Putting this off for the next meeting?
I don't think he's... has he submitted his plans for the building permit? No?
I don't think he has.
I don't think... there's not any issues with two weeks. I don't... I wouldn't think there would be.
Well, you guys are interested in doing that, I would like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting, and if you can ask him to come, we'd like to speak with him.
For two weeks?
Yeah, to the next meeting? Alright, everybody?
Okay, we'll be here in two weeks then.
Thanks for your work.
You gonna make the vote?
Yeah, I mean, I make the motion to table it, until the next meeting.
No, second.
Alright, we have a table and motion. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, this table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. Item number nine is consider awarding bid number 1415-006 to 14-215 Citywide Street Striping Project to Action Safety Supply Company in the amount of $236,658.35.
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, the city put out bid number 1415-006. It was for a 2014 and 2015 street-wide street striping project. Um, the bids were opened on Tuesday, March the 10th. Uh, we only had one bidder, uh, was the Action Safety Supply Company. Uh, we do know they are a reputable firm, they've done work here before.
This is right.
And the engineer's estimate was slightly lower than the bid that came back at $232,319. Uh, but we still feel that this is a competitive bid with a reputable company. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
This was looking at the packet and the... Back to our bid. Document bid tabulation, the bid came in was $263,658.35, rather than $236,658.35, so... $263,658.35, according to the bid tabulation. Is that right, Carol?
Yes.
Do you have the bid with you?
Um, yes.
Make sure, please.
Bet it was the only bid we got?
It was the only bid. And Action is a good company.
Yeah.
These... a lot of these companies have lots of other projects to do, and this work needs to be done. Definitely, and it was put out the public bid, so let me ask Carol to check their bid sheet.
$263,658.35.
Okay, that's what we need to award, then.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to do this for a while.
Yes, and we're gonna ask them to start on Eastern, so...
I'm making a motion to award the bid for $263,658.35.
Alright, thank you. Second. Thank you. Before we start it, could we put the pothole stuff in first?
Sure.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of 2013 Tornado Area Infrastructure Recovery and Implementation Plan.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'm happy to announce that we do have the final plan. Uh, this is commonly referred to as the I-RIP around City Hall. Uh, this plan was started in July of 2013, so it's been some time coming, but we feel like we have a really great project and product that we can show you. Jason Cotton with Cardinal Engineering is here, as well as Randall Mullins with TDA, and they will kind of explain the plan and what it means.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna take a second to thank you guys for letting me come up and present this plan to you. Like Elizabeth said, this has been a lot of work and a lot of hard work over the last 10 months, and so, I just want to thank you for opportunity to come up and present this evening. And as she said, we do call it the I-RIP because we don't wanna have to say Infrastructure Recovery and Implementation Plan every time we refer to it, so... You know, the 2013 tornado, it was a tragic event in the lives of a lot of people here in the City of Moore. And while we've heard a lot of stories over the past couple of years of families, business owners, homeowners inside City of Moore Limits, what we haven't really heard a lot about are, you know, probably what is one of the City of Moore's biggest assets, which is its public infrastructure system. And that, you know, even though properties are recovering at a really good clip, um, there's a lot of spaces in between that really haven't been addressed yet, and that's what this plan is about, is about these spaces. Um, it's our hope that this plan, as it's presented, will basically be a really good tool for the City of Moore to move forward and try to address some of these areas that still need it. So, uh, I do have a lot of information to present this evening, so I'm gonna go through some of this pretty quick. I printed out a hard copy of this plan, and it's not something that you slip in your briefcase. There's a lot of information in it, so we're just gonna hit the high points, but we will have some opportunities for questions if you guys have some of the... So, and this is just a brief overview of some information we'll present this evening. Uh, we'll go through kind of the assessment methodology and some of the public outreach components of the plan. Uh, these first two items are basically kind of what we did and how we did it, essentially. Uh, we'll go through the assessment findings, some of the projects we identified. Uh, Randall will present a funding analysis. Um, so that's kind of, in my mind, those three topics are kind of what we found out. And then the last, the last, uh, last two or three items there, funding analysis, implementation schedule and recommendations are kind of a, what's next? What do we do next? So, with that, I'm just gonna get right into it. So, uh, the I-RIP is essentially a plan that addresses, as I said before, public infrastructure. It doesn't address any private property, it doesn't address housing, it doesn't address public facilities. Um, those are all things that are identified and addressed in the community development block and at the DR funds that the city's received. Um, but this plan really just deals with one of those allocations, and that's public infrastructure. So, for the purposes of the plan, we basically defined public, or categorized the infrastructure into seven separate categories, so you can see those here. Streets, sidewalks, sanitary sewer, drainage, water distribution, bikeways and trails, and then gateway and streetscape. Once we have those infrastructure categories defined, we basically turn to kind of the geographical structure of the plan. And so what you see here is essentially the study area that was identified in the RFP, and it's basically encompasses about five square miles of land within City of Moore Limits, and it's obviously organized around the 2013 damage path. The only... the one thing that I would say is that the study area, as you can see, it extends some distance out from the damage path. So, the I-RIP is essentially a plan that addresses, as I said before, public infrastructure. It doesn't address any private property, it doesn't address housing, it doesn't address public facilities, and those are all things that are identified and addressed in the community development block grant, the DR funds that the city's received, but this plan really just deals with one of those allocations, and that's public infrastructure. So, for the purposes of the plan, we basically defined public, or categorized infrastructure into seven separate categories, so you can see those here: streets, sidewalks, sanitary sewer, drainage, water distribution, bikeways and trails, and then gateway and streetscape. Once we have those infrastructure categories defined, we basically turn to kind of the geographical structure of the plan, and so what you see here is essentially the study area that was identified in the RFP, and it's basically encompasses about five square miles of land within City of Moore limits, and it's obviously organized around the 2013 damage path. The only, the one thing that I would say is that the study area, as you can see, it extends some distance out from the damage path, basically about a quarter mile north and south of where, if you may identify, that the EF0 damage limits were, and that was primarily to address some potential drainage infrastructure impacts that we anticipated, that the city anticipated. So, taking that assessment area, we then divided it into 26 separate zones, and that's basically just trying to acknowledge the fact that this is a large land area, we've got to figure out some way to go through this methodically and figure out what's going on with the public infrastructure systems. They're basically, these zones are basically organized around existing neighborhoods or districts, they acknowledge land use patterns, they acknowledge the arterial roadway corridors that are in the study area, and then we took that, those assessment zones, and then we further subdivided them, and this was primarily done so that a lot of this plan involved going, you know, boots on the ground, people out in the field looking at your public infrastructure in these areas, and so this is just kind of an organizing element, a way for us to subdivide this area into manageable chunks so that the work can be completed. So, I think we had, I forget the number now, 26 assessment zones, and so we then divided, we then divided that into 77 assessment subareas, and basically just went through each one of the subareas, and I, basically what we did was we developed a scoring system where we could score each assessment subarea, the infrastructure, each assessment subarea within each infrastructure category, so basically what that means...